I'm doing this for Kathy because Kathy still doesn't know everyone. As you know Kathy Moran is our clerk now and I'll do the roll call. Here, Commissioner Robey.
I'm here.
Commissioner Gillespie.
Here.
Commissioner Overton.
Commissioner Matina.
Here.
Commissioner Vels.
Here.
Commissioner Farrington.
Here.
Commissioner Comstock.
Here.
And Commissioner Alternate Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Alternate Shield.
And Commissioner Alternate Adele.
Here.
And then Commissioner Alternate Lyons.
Here.
We have selection of a public member and a public member alternate. It's their, it's their four-year term ending May 2019. So we will interview and ask the member. We want to have each member go ahead and come up and speak to us.
Each person, each applicant. A little background on this is we sent out a notice that was published in paper, sent to the special districts recruiting for a public member because of Commissioner Robey's term expiring and so we need to go through this process to appoint a public member again. These public members, as well as any other members are, you serve at the pleasure of the appointed authorities, so if the city council wants to throw you off they have the authority. But, okay, so these are, this is for our four-year term. We alternate the public member and the public member alternate, so we'll be doing the public member alternate in a couple of years. To elect a public member alternate, I need an affirmative vote by each of the constituencies, that special districts, board supervisors, or county and cities. So I need at least one vote plus, since we got everybody here, six, I'm going to really to elect it, I guess I'm going to need four votes because if I get three and three, that isn't going to do it, so we're going to need four votes. So that's what I need. So the choice is, is how you choose to run the, these meetings. You, at this meeting, you can ask all the people to come up and talk about themselves and their letter that they sent and, or you, and you can, or you can establish an ad hoc committee if you want to do that, Sub-Lat goes do that, it's your choice. Or you can go and re-advertise again that you want more applicants. That's, we have three qualified applicants today and, and this one, the public member and public member alternate do not have a vote. It's just the city, cities, the county, and the districts. So it's how you choose to run this election. And I had an election in another county recently and the cities actually vetoed one of them because the city people voted no. But that doesn't, I'm not saying that's the case here, but that's the effect of the two city people voting no or county people, special district people. Suzanne, you have, and you and Ed probably should go over there.
Go over here. Yeah, I did have a question. I think you said you needed four votes. If I don't vote, you don't, do you? It's five votes here.
Yeah.
No, I know.
Okay, so commissioners, maybe you want to hear from each applicant at this time?
I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay. All right, so we'll take them in order in our packet. The first is Mike Dunlap.
And I want to say as Mike is walking up, we did receive one letter, you all received a copy of it, a letter from, of Betsy Condon. I received it by email this morning, but anyway, you all have copies of it and you guys were all on the email list.
Good morning, Mike.
Good morning. For the record, I'm Michael Dunlap.
Go ahead.
I have submitted a letter of interest in being the public member on Latto. I've been involved in local, state, and federal politics for forty-some-odd years. Really got involved in it probably initially back in 1975 when I was asked to be an assistant in Senator Roddy's office in drafting the legislation for the implementation of public employees' retirement, or public employees' perp. So, since then, I've worked in Alameda as Santa Clara County College of San Francisco and the last ten years I've been a participant here in Lake County. I own a piece of property here that we're hoping to actually form a real business. We're going to file a big issues business name soon. We've been developing property to grow lavender and various trees. We're not going to be a nursery, but organic, not going to certify organic, we'll do that business. I, as you know, I've been a participant here in Latto for the last couple of years, served on the committee to do the watershed protection district, municipal service review, been involved in the city of Liberty. And as a member of the public, I've served on a couple of boards, the local radio station, and I am a volunteer with the court. I've been uniquely qualified to do this kind of work. I am a past student of law and I'm not a lawyer. I don't play one on the radio. The ability to read large volumes of material, I do so on a regular basis. I have pretty good understanding of what the requirements are for various agencies, what their performance criteria should be, and I think I can do the job well. Any questions?
Thank you, Michael Dunlap. Any questions?
Why would you be a better candidate than the other two applicants specifically?
Well, I think I can bring a unique point of view to it. I do a lot of work in the community in terms of the disadvantaged, the people that are required by our structure of law to pay for services and are the least capable of understanding it. Many of them are dropouts in school, some of them don't read, some of them are difficult people who are employed, but they are still entitled to the services that they help pay them, and I think I can bring that perspective. We have, I believe, adequate representation of the folks at the top end of the financial scale. I'm not sure that we have at the bottom end. Thanks.
Okay, next we have Ed Robey.
I guess my main qualification is experience. I've served on Latto off and on for over twenty years. I served on Latto when I was a city councilman here in Liberty before the Cortezianox-Hersford Local Government Reformation Act of 2000 came along and changed the nature of Latto. I've served on Latto since then. I'm familiar with the purpose of Latto and the job it's supposed to do. The reason that I decided to apply for another term is because we have a number of interesting issues that have been going on for some time, especially in the background. One of them is the South Main Street annexation being proposed in Lakeport. Anyway, I'm just, I would like the opportunity to continue on and follow through. All I can really say is you've all worked with me for a number of years and you know me, you know, we have a Latto meeting, so you know what you're getting to reappoint me in the process.
I have the same question.
Go ahead.
I'll defer on that. Why do you think you're a better candidate than the two other applicants? Do we know?
Well, just basically because of my experience and the fact that this isn't a political job, you know, and I don't look at it that way. Representing the public means that you represent the big picture overall. You're not sitting there with your agency hat on, and I think I'm pretty good at doing that.
Do you have a question?
I do have a question, Madam Chair. Ed, the commissioner received a letter from Betsy Condon. Have you seen that letter?
I have.
Okay, so I'm going to, just on the record, because he's a big advocate for transparency and so am I, so I'm going to read that paragraph and I'd like you to respond as to her allegations that it may not be possible for you to share the concerns of the public. Okay? The paragraph that I'm referring to says, "First, while a member of the public at large, Mr. Robey, is a terrific advocate for Latto and Cal Latto, he has not been a strong supporter of the local agencies that Latto oversees. In fact, I think that because of Mr. Robey's close and longstanding relationship with the county board of supervisors and his longstanding friendship with our Latto's executive officer, Mr. Benoit, it may not be possible for him to share the concerns of the public." How do you respond to those, which I consider to be very serious allegations?
Well, I've been representing the public in one form or another for about thirty years. You know, when I hear something like that, it makes me wonder what the, what Betsy means by the public. Does she mean...
She's referring specifically to Ed, funders of all health and safety districts, local governments, and Latto itself.
Well, all I can say is, I wish Betsy were here because if she were, I would ask her to give one example where I am providing good representation for any of those special districts or other agencies. Thank you.
You have any other questions?
Thank you, Ed.
Sure, thank you.
Suzanne Lyons.
I am the public member alternate and have been for the last, I think, two years. Before that, I was serving on Latto as the representative from the city of Lakeport. I think that, for me, the big difference would be whether I was able to vote or not. As an alternate, I still can represent the public. I think that one of the really big jobs of the public member is to get information out to the public. It's not just coming here and voting on what you think the public wants, you need to let the public know what's going on. And the fact that people are here means that somehow that is, in some way, happening. I remember when I was first on Latto, you didn't see that many people come to Latto meetings, so I think that's a good thing that you do. I am a person who goes to meetings, I'm a person who asks questions when I don't understand something. I'm a person, I go on the radio, I talk to people in my business about what goes on in government, what goes on at Latto, what Latto does. I, for three years, I was on the radio with Steve Elias and one of the things we talked about when I was first on Latto is, what is Latto? What does Latto mean? What does Latto do? Does Latto do what it says it does? And they were all questions, okay? You can look at things from different points of view. One of the things that bothers me right now about a Latto policy, and John touched on it, is you really don't need to have everybody vote. You have two members that control the vote right now. So if you put Ed up right now and those two members voted for Ed, that's it, it's over, right? Doesn't matter what anybody else says. Well, because you have two votes, one of the county members has to vote for somebody else. There's nobody else that controls that on this panel right now.
I don't understand. You have six people that...
Two, two members, one member of each entity has to vote for the candidate.
Yes.
So if your two county members vote for the same person, that's it.
Yeah, likewise if the two city...
But there aren't two city...
Oh, that's my choice, there isn't.
No, there aren't. So it could be a really quick vote just by doing that, asking those two, those two people who they're voting for, and that's it.
I mean, the alternative is, is to continue this to the next meeting, to get, to get everybody here. That's an option for you.
So anyway, that was just something that occurred to me, and I don't know, that's something that the public should know, and I don't know if they understood it, but...
Do we know where Joyce is? Is Joyce coming?
I don't know, she was going to be here. Do you know, is Robey the alternate for Joyce if Joyce isn't present? No, it's Martin Shield because we're only allowed to have one alternate.
I think...
And it may leave sitting out with its own alternate.
Martin thought that Joyce was coming. Do, John, do you know if she's coming?
She's not coming.
She's not.
She had something to come up this morning.
So the alternative is, is if you feel uncomfortable, there's only five of you voting on this, is you can continue it to the next meeting or discuss, make a decision then. I mean, it's really up to you.
Madam Chair, I don't have a problem continuing, I just maybe Suzanne can educate me on this. I just, I don't understand the jurisdictional boundaries, how it comes into play for nominating a public member at large, that I don't quite understand, Madam Chair, because she's not a city representative. She's a public at large member, as is Mr. Dunlap and Mr. Robey.
Right, they don't have a vote in this.
Right, no, I understand that, but I'm trying to understand what the relevance is in terms of whether there's city representation or not.
I didn't ask, that was the question.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
If you want to clarify.
Yeah, the point I was making was, you have a former supervisor and two supervisors, and one of those supervisors will have to vote for somebody other than Ed in order for anybody other than Ed to win. So all I'm saying is, if you just put Ed up there and ask those two who they're voting for, you will have your election. That's it. Right?
Okay, well, let's keep moving forward here.
Yeah, because if one of, if both of them vote for Ed, nobody else needs to vote. Because one of them has to vote for someone else, don't they?
If they're majority voting.
Okay, let's do this, or we bring it back to the commissioners. Is there anyone in the public that wants to make a comment on all of, any, go ahead, sir, come on up, on any of our applicants, is what I'm trying to say.
Hello, my name is Scott Nadel, and this is wonderful to be here planning for the future and not crunching on some issue. I have thought about this issue a lot and this tears me up because I find Ed Robey to be one of the finest people that you could ever want to be on the commission, and I'm sure the lady's another fine person, but I'm going to cast my personal vote for Mike Dunlap. He really has a lot going on this issue, you know, understands things backwards and forwards, and he's been in, really actually looking at this issue closely for many, many years, and I mean very closely, right next to the water. If you live next to the water, it's, it is sort of, you get, it gets a little personal. And I think for that reason and Mike's dedication, that I would love to, you know, since this is about the future and we have a vision to move forward here instead of just back in politics, to, to move forward and have Mike Dunlap on the, on the commission, and I think it'd be wonderful. And that's, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Excuse me, could you repeat the last name again?
Not all, N-U-T-T, A-L-O.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Donna Lee and I'm a seventy-three-year-old member of the taxpaying public since 1976 in Lake County. I too thank Mr. Robey for the expertise he's given us over the years, but I need to say to you that as a member of the public, I am more swayed by your other two applicants, Mike Dunlap and Suzanne Lyons, because Mr. Robey has been getting paid to give us his expertise for all these years. So, and whereas Mr. Dunlap has voluntarily stayed educated and given you community input and stayed involved and helped us, as Suzanne Lyons mentions, on radio shows where Betsy Condon has done a very good job of educating the public about Latto and about community needs, and I also appreciate her Lake, her Facebook page, Lake Latto News and Comments, which has helped members of the public get educated, things that Mr. Robey hasn't had a chance to do. He affects the members of the public that he knows, but it's a big county and I think we need to open up and be heard from, to hear from other people so that we don't give the appearance of cronyism.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Go ahead.
Good morning, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Loretta Adrian and I am a taxpaying member of the public of Lake County, and I agree with Donna, with her comments. I think that, you know, Ed has contributed in, in the past four years to the commission, and I think it's time for new faces on, for the public and to represent the public. And I feel that Suzanne Lyons would be able to do that very well. She's been the alternate, so she's aware of all of the, all of everything that's come before the commission and all of the upcoming decisions that you have to make, and I believe that Mike Dunlap would also have, be a good contributor to the, to the commission, bring new ideas from working, actually working very directly with the public in many different ways and many different commissions that he's worked with as a volunteer. So I would like to see the commission really take a new look at Suzanne Lyons and Mike Dunlap. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Slayton and I had a, as far as, Mr. Farrington, referring to, to Betsy's comments as allegations, I would say more is more of a perspective, not a general accusations here. And it seems to me when people are friends or on friendly terms, that there would be, not with anyone, there's a natural tendency. I consider, certainly, I've known Ed for years and we're certainly on friendly terms, if not friendly, and so it's even hard for me to get up here and say that when he asked Betsy to define the word public and what does that got to do with the idea that people get to like each other and, and look out for each other and not to be dishonest, there's a natural tendency to care about your friends and to be influenced by that, and I think that's what this was about. And I'll just do that, thank you.
Thank you.
Murray Stager, resident of Fairlight, and I haven't discussed this with anyone, the information that I about to state is public, but perhaps I think this commission is unbalanced in terms of public representation and reality, and that Ed Robey and Joyce Overton and Smith might have been a violation of the Brown Act in past board meetings with TBA. That doesn't sit well with the idea of a public representation case. So it's because of that that I have an objection to Ed Robey continuing as his board, and that's just my opinion, but violation of Brown Act in terms of representation, TBA passed in 2010 January, was pretty clear regarding how that representation has been a violation, and I don't think it, it just suggests that this commission is unbalanced as Ed Robey and just, and Joyce Overton were on that board and are members of the commission. So I think someone else should represent the public.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Does anyone want to make a comment, Nadel? No.
About Brown Act violation, I'd like to know a lot of myself.
Okay.
Let me to explain it further?
Anyone else want to come up?
Please. Shall I explain it further a little bit?
I don't think so right now.
And the fact that, that he doesn't know that is another issue regarding the unaware issue of public relations.
Does anyone else want to come up? So I'll bring it back to the commissioners, if we want to go ahead and take a nomination or if we want to move us to a future meeting.
I would like a little more clarification on the vote. There's five members voting today.
Today there is, yeah. So if three voted for a candidate other than Ed Robey, they would be elected, right?
One who would have to be a supervisor, correct?
One.
One has to be a supervisor.
So quorum is three, I mean, a firm as well would be three, there has to be, we got one each, one special district, one city, and one county. If you did it today.
And if we waited and had the, the other person that's missing today, then all these speakers would have to speak again because she would not have been able to hear what was said today.
Yeah, she listened to the tape. Unless they listen to the...
Public tape.
Or the video.
Madam Chair, while I'm in favor of moving forward, we're here, this was duly noticed. It was not any surprise that this was going to happen today. It's a normal act of business that we were prepared to conduct, and I think we should move forward and conduct.
You ready?
I'm sorry.
Are you okay?
Oh, yeah, I'm fine.
Yes, yes, okay, so I will go ahead and open it up for nomination. Would anyone like to make a nomination?
Madam Chair, I would move to nominate Ed Robey for consideration as public member.
Thank you. Do we have any other nominations? Okay, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All of us in favor of Ed Robey?
You want to, we'll call votes.
Yeah, sure. I think we won't call votes, I would know for sure.
We won't call votes, please.
I can, I can start, I can do it. Commissioner Gillespie.
Aye.
Commissioner Farrington.
Aye.
Commissioner Comstock.
Aye.
Commissioner Matina.
Aye.
Commissioner Vels.
Aye.
Three, three to two, three, I'm sorry, four to one, and we have one member from each of the three constituents.
Okay.
So Ed Robey is appointed as the public member for a four-year term.
Thank you.
Alternative's not for two more years. Alternative position sits for two more years.
The alternate position sits for two more years.
Yeah, because they're often, they're alternating here.
Okay, so a little bit forward, if anyone wants to... Could everyone have a chance to look a little minute?
Madam Chair, did anyone have any additions or corrections to the minutes? I haven't gone over them. I didn't see any. If there are none, I would have moved to conclude on this again.
See. Sorry.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This time we'll see any public comment to address any matter not on the agenda. Okay, consent agenda. Review and authorize payments of expenses for March and April 2015.
I need to check that.
You're elected.
Can I just turn this off?
Okay. So we have a motion on the consent agenda.
I'm going to be, Commissioner, consent agenda. Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a public hearing regarding the City of Clear Lake municipal service review and sphere of influence. Essentially, the opportunity was important.
Okay, all of you were asked to bring your copy of the service review that was distributed in January. I solicited for comments. Some comments have been received and I've received the, I did provide you with a memo summarizing these comments as well as a letter from Betsy Con that she distributed to me that should be part of the record for the service review. So today what we're doing is it was essentially a question, the general plan is not yet complete. That's a, that's an issue. The fact is, is the city is doing a general plan and updating the 1981 or whatever it is, old general plan. So that's in the process nearing adoption. And the purpose of the MSR is not to scrutinize the general plan. That's a whole other issue. We can scrutinize it at another time. The city has adopted, has housing elements certified by the Housing and Community Development. I've personally seen the letter where it's in substantial compliance with the housing law. So that is, so that's my comments on the general plan. And there was some issues about the bonded indebtedness from the redevelopment agency and that's explained in the report. It doesn't appear to be a problem. The city has paid through tax increment costs. And flood control, flood control services in the town, in the city are a little more of what I call more problematic. It is, there's still a lot of, to me, and there's a finding in the MSR, there needs to be a clear lines of authority. Who's going to do what? Street flooding and incidental flooding on the streets, it's done by the city, public authorities. The issue becomes this, what about this street beds that go into, into the, clearly? Well, that's not clearly defined with the watershed protection district. Who does? The city, I don't believe that, Joan, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I don't believe the city, the city doesn't do it. I saw some pictures of the, of one of the events that we had. And so what has to happen is there needs to be a clear line of, okay, what is the watershed protection district going to do and what is the city going to do? And that's not defined. So that's, that's a finding in the MSR that they, that has to be dealt with. You know, it's really not up to us to say, okay, watershed district, you do it, or city, you do it. They need to meet and define who's doing what. I guess the same would apply to Lakeport, too, but they're not, it's an issue today. So that is the, and then there's, I have the letter from Betsy Con and I'm not going to really make any comments on it. Except I have one comment, is that when we do a service review, we don't hire registered professional engineers, geologists and these air quality scientists or hydrologists, we don't hire these people. The budget would be astronomical if we did. And so what we do is we, we do the best we can by talking to people in public and what, and public input is, you know, some of the things that I just spoke about a few minutes ago, is the reason that's been brought up. But anyway, the recommendation is to approve the MSR subject to some of these changes and these comments and the rec, and having the record from Betsy's letter and staff report.
Thank you, Joan. Any questions from the commissioners before we open the public hearing? No?
I could, I have a question. John, we, this is a cool amount of time on MSRs before, would you define for, for all of us, the, what actually can happen, what recommendations can be made and what teeth do any of them have in them from an MSR?
Well, what the MSR does is support the sphere of influence. It sends a signal. For example, if the city were just woefully inadequate in services, we would start to think, well, maybe the city's boundary needs to be more constrained and not larger. In this case, the sphere of influence is the same as the city now. It's a little bit different than, it's more interesting when you talk about fire districts, you know, who's serving what area and then you make a recommendation sending a signal that fire district A should do an area and not fire district B. Although in Lake County, that doesn't appear to be an issue with fire districts. But that is an example. And with cities where you've got two cities next to one another, Lake County and Smith are, you've got two cities that are separate.
Each city ends up being more of a enormous amount of unincorporated area.
Right. So we're not going to mean that the cities be consolidated with one another. It's obviously not something that happened. And also when we do make a recommendation, say that this district or a city should be disincorporated or whatever, well, who's going to provide the services after the city is gone? Is the county, you know, or in the case of a district, we're always interested when we dissolve a district, is a successor agency needed? You know, and if the, if one is needed to provide the services, we have to identify that. But so the service review supports the sphere of influence. In this case, the sphere of influence is coterminous with the existing city boundary and there's no other service provider that can, that can provide it. Fire's provided by, by South Lake County, I'm sorry, County Fire. Waste water is provided by Lake County Sanitation. Water's provided by four different entities, which is another issue. You've got a mutual, you've got a public utility and two utility, two county water districts cannot tie in a little bit lower. So those, those are already taken care of by others. The city, that's police, planning, public works, essentially are their services.
One of my honors. One of the questions I think that I'd like, and I think maybe the public would like to have answered is, when LAFCO makes findings, that's, there is no tooth, right? There's nothing to say, you will do this. And what I'm, what I'm thinking of is with watershed protection district, one of the findings that LAFCO made was that that advisory committee, advisory commission on the stormwater program needed to meet. And I believe that was like six months ago that we made that.
Right.
There's nothing we can do after that if they don't meet.
Well, what I, yeah, that's true. We can't, we, well, what we can do is we adopt the sphere of influence of the district. That's coming up next fiscal.
Uh huh.
And so that's ongoing. What I did do after the service review was approved, I sent a letter to the, to Anthony, as chair of the board, and to Scott DeLeone, who's director of the district. And I should say Anthony, who is director or, what is it, manager, not manager, what are you, the chair of the watershed protection district?
Directors, right.
Right. And the directors. So they received notice that, yes, the advisory committee can meet and there's all these other findings in there. And, and then it's really up to them. Where LAFCO comes to play is if we decide we want to, we want to have a different sphere of influence other than the district boundary, which is county one. That's, that's really not the, the best example. LAFCO cannot initiate an annexation or detachment. But we can initiate a dissolution of the district. We can initiate, we can initiate those sorts of things, a consolidation. But we can't, we can't initiate an, they have, the legislature hasn't given us the power, which I don't know if they will, but, so that's the fact.
Madam Chair. Can you hear me now? And I don't know if this question, John, is for you, staff or maybe a representative from the city who are clearly kind of coming late into this as a new commissioner. I mean, that was my question, trying to understand if the sphere of influence in this MSR had to, was pertaining to a potential expansion of boundaries over its coterminous. Was there any, and I'm assuming that some of that deliberation into whether to expand or become actually a sphere of influence that's coterminous has to do with the amount of services that are being provided, not looking in the future to duplicate, looking at provision of existing services within those boundaries and if you're able to actually adequately provide those services, looking at the economies, looking at vacant buildings, et cetera, in terms of what's existing within the city of Clear Lake. I guess my question that I have was, has there ever been any dialogue? If I understand the word detachment, that actually that's the constraining of boundaries or actually making them smaller? Was that something that came before this commission or the city had even broached in looking at the MSR or the sphere of influence update?
Well, those are some of the options, of course. This is a no sphere, a reduced sphere, or just leave it the same as it is. It's been functioning at this point, so we just left it the same as it is. Joan, do you have any comment on that?
Joan Philby, City Mayor of City of Clear Lake. During my tenure with the city, those particular things that have just been identified have not been addressed, detachment, that sort of thing. It is my understanding, however, that several years before my tenure began here, so probably be around 2009, there was some discussion about detachment and that didn't go very far. The discussion is, my understanding is, was with county staff at that point. And there appeared to be an inability to reach an agreement on what that area would be and what the sharing of tax revenue would be. So it died at that point. And to my knowledge, it's not been addressed again.
Any other questions up here? Go ahead and open the public hearing. Would anyone from the public like to speak?
For the record, Mike Dunlap. As you know, I was a participant in your committee to put together the municipal service review for the watershed protection district. And one of the findings that we made was that there are properties in the city of Clear Lake that pay taxes to the county of Lake for watershed protection district services that aren't getting any services from the county. And that was one of our recommendations to you to put in municipal service review. In this municipal service review for the city of Clear Lake, there's a finding that there is no flood control done in the watershed, in creeks, in tributaries. And so now we come to the problem of LAFCO. As I understand it, your responsibility is to make a determination on whether or not municipalities are providing the services that they're supposed to provide. And here we have very clear indication that we have taxpayers paying taxes and not getting services. And parenthetically, the director of public works for the county of Lake has said that they do not provide services in the city of Clear Lake. What action are you going to take? You've got taxpayers that are paying taxes for services and they're not getting. Now somehow, this body who is supposed to be the legislative watchdog over the municipals, you've got to rectify the fact that you've got two agencies. Maybe they should be doing something together. Maybe they should come to a determination that the one that's getting the money should be doing it. But you need to do something to get these people that are paying taxes served and to provide the service, provide the protection for the watershed specifically, for the receiving water body, okay? And, and yet what I'm hearing in this conversation is, you're not able to tell the city that it has to do this and yet we're not making the county do it. So how are you doing your job? That's my question to you. You need to make this happen.
It's more, yeah, thanks, Mike. Okay, there is the issue with tax, like you say. The appropriate venue is the sphere of influence for the watershed protection district. There are two ways to, for the city to get out of the watershed protection district or detach, and that's one through a resolution of the board supervisors of the city council or effective agency. The other is a petition of the landowners to petition LAFCO to initiate, to thereby initiating a detachment from the watershed protection district.
And what has LAFCO done to inform the landowners that that's their responsibility and that's their methodology of getting the services that they've been paying for all these years?
We're gonna, while we, we mentioned it in the service review and in the service review, we will mention it in the service review for the watershed protection district. It was addressed in, a little bit in the MSR, but that's the avenue that we have is to mention it in the sphere of influence update for the watershed district.
How does that get to the public?
We post it on the website. We do everything to comply with the law and that's how we do it. We don't, we don't send notices to everybody in the county. But that's, that's the avenue to do it, is a petition or a resolution to initiate a detachment. LAFCO has no authority to do that.
So you don't make a report to, you don't make a report to the city council? You don't make a report to the local press? You don't hold any meetings? And, and the majority of the people in the properties that we're talking about don't have computer access?
I'm going to let Scott answer this, continue this conversation because it's all gone away from what I can talk to legally.
I understand that.
So at this point.
That's why we're paying you to be here.
I'm not saying that.
Good morning, Scott.
I'm not saying I disagree with you in a bit. If you don't get the service, then why do you pay for it?
Exactly.
That's exactly the, the issue. And.
Well, like, LAFCO is an agency of limited jurisdiction. We do not have the authority to initiate detachments. All we can do is analyze them in a municipal service review, make determinations relative to those issues, and then establish a planning document called a sphere of influence. For example, the sphere, if, if the facts and if the commission agrees, the sphere might exclude the city of Clear Lake from the sphere of the agency. That's a planning indication that as far as LAFCO is concerned, it will not be part of the district because the district isn't providing services to that area. And normally you exclude areas from a sphere that are not being provided services and they're where there's no intention to provide services. Then it's up to the public. It's always up to the public with any public agency. They're the ones who have to make the public agency comply with the policies and, and the spirit of the law. It's always up to you.
Okay. My point that I want to hammer home this morning is that it's your responsibility. You're the commissioners of LAFCO. You're the ones that are supposed to make it known to your constituents, that would be the public, that the agencies are not doing their job.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you.
Does that work now? Yes. So my question would be. My question would be, is there anything that we can do to make the services be provided? Because if people have paid for the services to just, when you haven't had services for 20 years, we've taken your money, but now you can leave and not get any services. Where, and I know you said it was within the sphere of influence of the watershed protection district, but do we have a way of seeing that the city gets the services in this? There's no, we have no recommendation or anything to say that a measure that would solve some of their problem would be to get the services that they need from them?
Well, you could make that recommendation. You have no, you have no statutory authority to enforce it.
So we could, but in other words, it could be a finding to say that this is not being done, and that it should be being done because it is being paid for and it has been.
Well, sure. That's perfectly within your authority to recommend that, and that's an appropriate finding in the, or an MSR. Or the alternative would be either provide a service or detach.
Right.
One of the other.
Would anyone else from the public like to speak on the service review or sphere of influence?
Good morning again. Joan Philippi, City Manager, City of Clearlake. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. The city has been intimately involved in the appropriation of the document through communication with your executive director, John Benoit. The document, I think it's clear the recommendations that the city needs to follow, and in the next five years, when you would be looking at this again, we would be working toward implementing or establishing dialogue, for instance, with watershed protection district to address some of the issues that have been identified here this morning. We booked the document as being a companion to our general plan. I wanted to give you just a brief update on where we are with that document, because I have reported to you before that I expected to have it approved by this time. We ran into a blip. We had to step back and include some information in that document that was missed, and that required doing some recalculations of transit numbers and that sort of thing. We're very close to coming forward again. We will have to very likely recirculate the document because of that. There also was a law change regarding input from the state during our process, so we had to get input from them. So that recirculation probably will happen within the next month, and then we'll be on track to have it adopted. The MSR will be a companion to that document, as well as the EIR, and we will be working to identify through our continuing update of our planning process those things in the document that we need to address in the next five years. I did want to address a comment that Mr. Dunlap made in terms of the circulation, or not circulation, but the presentation of the MSR document. It certainly will be on the city council agenda. We will give a full report on what that document has in it. We have reported along the way that it is being worked on. So there is another avenue that that information is being disseminated in the public in regard to the document. I think that concludes my comments. I did want to just make a comment for, just because I'm trying to get that information out there. Your executive director indicated our housing element has recently been certified. Not only was it certified, but it was designated as an exemplary document by the State Department of Housing and Community Development, and has been posted on their website as an example of an exemplary document for other rural small communities to use as a tie. So we're very proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Anyone else from the public? Okay, last chance. Go ahead and close the public hearing. Bring it back to the commission to consider adoption of the resolutions. Any other comments, questions?
Well, Madam Chair, with approval, appear at this point, we would need to offer the resolution to adopt the service review.
That includes additional of an addition of another finding per the law regarding the coordination of the watershed.
Yes, absolutely. Offer a resolution without amendment.
Okay, we'll take a little poll vote.
Okay, mind you do this one?
Please. I need some, I need some.
All right. Commissioner Robie.
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Gillespie.
Aye.
Commissioner Matina.
Aye.
Commissioner Mills.
Aye.
Commissioner Olberton is absent. Commissioner Farrington.
Aye.
And Commissioner Constock.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next, here's the final LAFCO budget and public hearing. Joan?
Madam Chair, do we not have to do the sphere of influence?
Oh, it's going to be separate.
They're just separate items.
All right, LAFCO, I'll take the motion over here.
Madam Chair, I would often request in adopting the sphere of influence update for the city of Clearlake, as a covenant, this will be.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Robie.
Aye.
Commissioner Gillespie.
Aye.
Commissioner Olberton.
Absent.
Commissioner Mills.
Aye.
Commissioner Farrington.
Aye.
Commissioner Constock.
Aye.
And Commissioner Matina.
Aye.
And now, the LAFCO budget.
Okay. The LAFCO budget, this is another public hearing, and we did a proposed budget at the last meeting, and this is the final budget. I've been tracking our finances. I was starting to become concerned that we wouldn't meet our revenue, but it cost carryover, and that would distort the whole budget. So, but I verified that we do have the, we will, our revenue carryover will be stated in the proposed budget, so there's no changes to the budget that are recommended from the prior proposed budget that was adopted at the March meeting. So I, we have a resolution 15-5 for your consideration.
Any questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, the public hearing is open. Anyone like to speak on the LAFCO budget? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Bring back to the commission. Any final comments?
My apologies.
I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd move to be approved, the LAFCO budget. Is it, it's a resolution?
Resolution.
Okay, I'll offer the resolution.
Here's roll call vote.
Aye.
Commissioner Gillespie.
Aye.
Commissioner Olberton.
Absent.
Commissioner Mills.
Aye.
Commissioner Farrington.
Aye.
Commissioner Constock.
Aye.
And Commissioner Matina.
Aye.
Motion carries. Calafco nominations. Consider nomination for a board supervisor's member or special district's member to run for the Calafco executive board.
This is an annual event. They send a notice out to me and asking if there's anybody that would be interested in running for either of those seats. This year, they alternate. The next year, it'll be the public member and the city members. In the Northern District, as you know, Calafco is divided into four areas of the state. The Northern District includes this Lake County, and we've had past commissioners who have sat on the Calafco executive board. So this nomination would be for a special district member or a board county member to consider running for the Calafco executive board.
Okay. Yeah, Anthony?
I have no interest, Madam Chair.
Special districts? No?
No thanks.
Okay.
Okay.
No.
Thank you for the offer.
Just bringing it up.
Maybe next year.
You wanted to sprawl us guys once, yeah.
Okay, off my staff, the Commissioner to attend the Calafco conference in Sacramento on September 2nd.
Okay, this one, what I'd like to do is, well, there's a couple reasons for this, is that we're spending public monies, and we need, and it's always good to have representation at Calafco Conference, but I would like to, and I need to know pretty much today who is going to attend because of the Calafco Conference being in the first week of September, others that haven't been to these conferences for a long time. And so, so I would like to know who's interested in attending the conference. And we probably have budgeted for about four, no more than four, to attend this. Fortunately, it's in Sacramento.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, if I could just say, you know, there's conferences and there's conferences, and I've found that the LAFCO conferences are actually very worthwhile, particularly for new members, and I would strongly encourage anybody that hasn't been to see if you can attend. And if you're there, there's a felon, he's a judge, he's a former county supervisor, former mayor, former everything, I guess, a guy named Rosenberg, and he puts on, he has created a shortened version of Robert's Rules of Order, or Rosenberg's Rules of Order. It's a simplified way of running meetings, designed for small agencies and so forth. It's really good. So if you're there, try to make it to that one if you can.
What I would like to say, the new members first, and of course, I know he's not interested for being an officer, maybe he might be interested in attending the conference. Commissioner Farrington. I just had to bring up, you are new on.
I just checked my calendar. I have an obligation with CSEC that week as well.
Really? Okay. Are they in Sacramento?
Actually, yes. But I have other conflicts there after that. Look, this is a session for the fourth, right?
Yes.
So, yeah, after the board meeting, the third is CSEC, and the fourth, I have a conflict on that day on Friday.
Oh, okay. All right.
As of now, it's not something that can move. If that changes, I could, you know, pop back and forth, but right now, you have a conflict.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay. And what I like to have is, you know, there's those that are interested, and then there's those that, you know, have the time, but we don't do it in case somebody decides they're not going to go, and somebody else could fill in.
And I need to know, John, in about a month or so, if I, do you want to find out about July, right?
Yes, yes, in July, and meanwhile, but I'd like to.
So it may change for Friday.
Well, and Friday's a short day usually, isn't it?
It's a short day.
It's like a one-session deal, so you're like.
I have an obligation early in the morning. It may change, I'll know in a month.
Okay, in about a month.
If it does, I'll be able to do it.
Anyone else interested in going?
Yes.
Yes.
I can, I can.
You want to go? So.
Okay, you have to get down.
And then we could, we could sell a spot for Joyce.
Yeah, Joyce, Commissioner Mills, Commissioner Abel.
Okay.
And one other, and then possibly Commissioner Farrington.
Okay.
Maybe Commissioner Robie too, I don't know. I don't know. It's been a while since.
It's been a while since I've been, but you run the bus. I'd be happy to step aside for someone else that, you know, could only commit, but if there's an empty slot, I'd be, I'd be interested too.
All right, well, let's.
Then I got the registration, I got the personal appeal, and, yeah, we'll find a way.
So let's appoint our voting member.
Expenses involved, I think I have to make. Oh, I appreciate that. If you can get your money paid for the travel expenses, that would be very helpful, especially for the fire districts.
Great.
Okay, good.
And so let's appoint our voting member and voting member alternate.
Madam Chair.
Yep. Is he for sure going though?
He's going. He just said he wants.
He's kind of a villain.
And then the alternate could be Commissioner Mills.
Yes. That's good.
Okay. All those in favor?
All right.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Our voting number alternate. We'll have to have a crew there, so that's great.
Just so everybody knows, usually the way it goes is that our group, if the voting member's going to be voting on something, we have a little caucus and kind of decide how the voting member's going to vote. It's not just that that's the one person.
Well, it's not, we're not discussing LAFCO business.
No, it doesn't constitute a. Well, ask Scott.
I'm sorry.
Those of you that are being at a conference violate the Brown Act.
No, no, that's specific, et cetera. As long as you don't need, discuss agency business.
Right.
Okay, consider fee waiver for dissolution of Reclamation District 695 to Lee Lake. Tom?
Okay, that one, they, Maryland is one of the directors of the Reclamation District 695. They've been, all of the land within that Reclamation District has been taken over by the Wetlands Reserve Program, it's programmed through the USDA. The math for fee dissolution, the first thing I did was I went to the county auditor's office and found out how much money they have. They have $350 in their account, so they have virtually no money. They don't function anymore, and so, in this case, since they don't have any money, and a dissolution of this district would be pretty much a no-brainer, they even approved a resolution that, to initiate this, that would suggest, you know, that we can consider a fee waiver for them to dissolve this district.
What would happen to the $350 if the district is dissolved?
I guess the county pays it. Everyone's they spend it.
So do you need us to take action?
Yes, take action.
Anyone from the public have any comments? Okay, commissioners?
Well, Madam Chair, no comments. I believe that we waive the LAFCO fee for dissolution of the Reclamation District 695, which is to Lee Lake.
You couldn't hear that?
I'll repeat that. I would, we'll find it again. We will rewaive the LAFCO fee for dissolution of the Reclamation District 695, which is to Lee Lake.
Thank you.
Sorry, I can turn on, forgot. Thank you.
Wait a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consider contract amendment for Scott Brown and John Benoit.
What I've done here is, before I even get into this, I did a survey. I wanted to know, you know, I guess the theme of this one is everybody wants pay raises. Okay, so I, first thing I did was I talked to the city managers and some of the county managers and said, well, hey, have you guys gotten pay raises in the last 10 years? And the big answer was, I think, nobody got pay raises. But the county, I don't know about the cities in the county, but you can look at longevity increases. And so what I did was I did a staff report here, and we all know that the CPI has gone up, and, you know, it's really unfortunate that, I know the city of Clearlake, they gave some extra time off to people because they didn't get their pay raises, but the fact is, is that nobody got pay raises, they got, you know, some longevity increases, and in terms of that, it's very meager. The State Controller's Office, John Chang, he sent out a newsletter the other day, which was really interesting. I don't know if you guys received it as public officials, but there was a bar graph in there about the economy, the recovery of the economy. And what happened was, the Bay Area and Southern California did tremendous economic recovery. Get up north to Sacramento, pretty much, again, a big goose egg, nothing. So, I mean. So, I mean, a little bit, a little bit, but nothing to really speak of, but the rural California is still in a recession, but not California as a whole, as you, as you know. So what I've done was a contract amendment, I've decided, I'm not asking for anything because I've come from the philosophy that let's let the others get some compensation first and then I'll ask for it when the county or the cities actually have the money to offer pay raises to their folks. I mean, why should they be giving pay raises to LAFCO or the Transportation Commission or any of these until their people get something? So, but I do, do have a couple clarifications I need, uh, would like in the contract is, is one is that we have this, uh, amount for the clerk, which is 233 per month, uh, for, for minutes. Well, you know, that doesn't make sense. So I just said, well, let's just change it at a clerk expenses shall be billed at $50 an hour. Advantage to that is that I can use the clerk for other thing other than minutes. Um, and so that's the one. And the other is, is because of, it's called the complex project provision. This doesn't apply to service reviews and, uh, MSRs. This applies to that if we get a really controversial project, like I have, you with county, that probably would have cost me hundreds and hundreds of hours because we had litigation and all this stuff involved. What was nice about it is it was paid for by somebody else, not by the cities and the county and the districts. So what this is, is that we, we, that I may charge on an hourly basis based on a complex project. For a complex, we take in fee deposits. And once our, our amount exceeds these fee deposits, we get revenue from the fee deposits and that covers the cost of the additional cost. So that's pretty much revenue neutral in terms of the cities and county general fund. It's just that I shouldn't be the bearing of front personally for controversy in, uh, generated by a project. It's just a project that's there. We had a couple in the past 10 years that came close, not, not too much. And then there was one annexation in Lakeport, the Addison Annexation. That was the one the regional board slammed them down and we had to go back and that was a little more, that wasn't, that had the potential to be very confrontational. It did though, so there was no additional charges to anybody on that one. Likewise, the consolidation of four or five districts in the North and South County. The rest has been nothing. So Lake County has gotten off pretty good in the last 10 years in terms of controversial annexations and those sorts of things. So that's, um, what I propose and Scott has developed some language. And the other is that, again, getting back to my thing, is everybody else should get a pay raise before I do, or in this case, a longevity increase, which I'm not asking for, um, is that, that we consider a longevity increase of 5% for Scott, um, in his contract and that we also, uh, we, we need to look at this, um, litigation of costs because I know that public agency litigation is much more expensive than 175 an hour. And, but I'm not proposing any changes to that at this point, but we, we should probably do a survey. I know for a fact it's, uh, the cheapest I've seen is 220 and more like 280, but that was a few years ago. So, you know, I don't know what it is now, but, and attorneys, uh, charge, they have usually two rates, a public agency rate that they charge and then they have a litigation rate that is much higher. That's the standard operating procedure if you ask any law firm around, that's what they do. Uh, litigation is very, uh, much more demanding than, uh, other things that we do. So anyway, that's the recommendation, is amend the, uh, contract for Scott for that longevity increase and to amend my contract for those two provisions for the clerk and controversial projects.
Thank you, John.
And there's no, yeah, that's all.
Questions? Comments?
Well, just, if I may, Madam Chair, um, just thank you, John, for your, uh, being conscientious about the fiscal times we're in, but at the same time, being very giving to Scott and staff. And I just want to express my appreciation for that, for the consideration, particularly the decision, very giving yourself, I appreciate it.
I agree with that. Yes, I can, I can.
Anyone else?
I agree.
Anyone from the public?
So, Madam Chair, we can keep, uh, moving on the second amended contract for legal services, including longevity increase, correct?
Correct.
Make sure I turn the mic for not apologize. We've got the, uh, second amended contract for legal services, including the longevity increase.
All those in favor?
Aye. Do you think we'll all vote?
Yes, let's do it. Okay, the, the first amendment for, um, staff services. Commissioner Robey?
Aye.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Aye.
Commissioner Overton?
Absent.
Commissioner Mills?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrington?
Aye.
And Commissioner Constock?
Aye.
And lastly, Commissioner Matina?
Aye. But, John, was that for legal services?
No, that was just for the first contract, for the staff services.
Uh, no, I did legal services.
Oh, you did legal services? Okay, that was for legal services, okay.
Yeah, that was actually the second amended contract for legal services.
Okay, staff, staff services.
Yeah, that's, that's next.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I, um, Madam Chair, I would move that we approve the third amended contract for LAFCO staff services, including establishing, I already made the clerk services and contractual provision for complex projects.
Okay, we have a motion on second. Roll call?
Commissioner Robey?
Aye.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Aye.
Commissioner Overton?
Absent.
Commissioner Mills?
Aye.
Commissioner Farrington?
Aye.
Commissioner Constock?
Aye.
And Commissioner Matina?
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, and then if you'd like me to do some research on legal costs, I'll put it on, I mean, litigation costs.
Litigation costs.
I'll put it on a future agenda and I'll be back for a pay raise when you guys decide to get pay raises to your board.
Thank you, John.
Okay.
It's been a long, you talk about longevity.
Twenty years.
Executive officers' report, RCD consolidation?
Uh, yes, the RCD, uh, these are just items I'm going to put up at the next meeting. It's the RCD consolidation. The, um, City of Lakeport Sphere of Influence, I handed out this document to you today. That's their supplemental environmental, uh, in the Porter Addendum. And I'll put the sphere of influence only on that agenda. This, because something's in the sphere of influence doesn't mean it's going to get enacted. So just recall, there is a difference between the sphere and an actual annexation. It's not a promise of annexation. Don't think of it as that. There are the devils in the details on an annexation. So I just wanted to clarify the, the difference here because I know there's some fiscal issues dealing with the, uh, annex, uh, potential annexation, but we're not getting into those at this point. The fire district spheres of influence, I'm putting that on the agenda. Received some comments last time I sent it out to, to, I gave you copies and sent it out to the various, uh, fire districts and received a couple comments back from, uh, Lakeport and, uh, Clearlake, Lake County Fire and Lakeport County Fire. And then, um, there, we have two dissolutions, the RD 695, it looks like that might be on next agenda. There's another one called, uh, Reclamation District 2070 that the county is working on at this point. The, uh, can, there's also some other projects going on. There's, uh, not, there's a consolidation of the CSA 16 and, um, uh, Clearlake. And it might be a consolidation. My, I, I think the way I work with, uh, county council is, is that it would be a, uh, the dissolution of CSA 16 and an annexation into the Clearlake County. And then, um, the next would be, uh, there's another one, uh, in Spring Valley Lakes, a small one of one parcel, that I've spoken to special districts about. And those are right on the radar screen at this moment.
Yes.
Oh, and Middletown, there's another one down.
Yeah, there's Middletown. Uh, where's the Reclamation District 2070? What one is that?
Uh, boy, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Oh, that's, no, that's not Tully Lake.
No, Tully Lake 695.
Yeah. Uh, I thought that was near Rodan's Lou. I don't, I don't know, I'll have to look.
Okay, I, you know, I'm just curious what that one is.
When they compare their documents, it'll...
Yeah, yeah, the, the problem with these is they were formed in like 1905 or something like that and there's no LAFCO record of these. And, uh, so, we have, I got some, I got the maps and descriptions from the county surveyor. So that's what we're going with. I know that this 2070 is, I guess, going to be initiated by the county board or watershed protection district. I think it's the county board that have to do this. Um, there's a, a bunch of MSRs that I'll be working on too. Couple of them in the Vector District and, uh, the, uh, Adam Springs District and Villanueva and others. These are small services that need to be done. And it's interesting going through some of the old LAFCO files about Scott's Valley Water Conservation. I have no idea what they do, but, but we're going to find out.
I'm still trying to figure out what they do.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll learn.
Yeah.
So that is my...
Thank you, John. Um, missionary reports, any items or issues of concern?
I, I just, one thing that was in here, the very first thing I learned sitting on LAFCO, it's a county representative, but I'm not going to. And the statement read here is, "Any member appointed on behalf of local government shall represent the interests of the public as a whole, not solely the interest of the planning authority for government code," whatever, but you sit on LAFCO, you represent everybody. It's not the county, it's not the city, it's not special districts. You represent everybody, 64,000 people in the county, so you're there. And I took that seriously one time, did this. I didn't really even know what LAFCO was before I got on the board and got appointed to this. But what about that?
Maybe you're the one that should be going to the conference.
Oh, no.
Jim thought it was a comedy club.
I ate it one time.
Well, we occasionally, oh, that's a Tuesday.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? Do we have any correspondence?
Uh, yeah, I do have. I got a letter from the, just from the Board of Equalization. Apparently the city has asked for, regarding some of the sales tax revenue out there in Lakeport. What was interesting, in 2003, there was 357,000 generated sales tax revenue and 377,000, I thought it was about 800,000, but it was considerably less. And also I received an, uh, a thing for a, a, a LAFCO executive officer in Napa County that I'd be glad to share with anybody else who would like to apply. So that's really what I received.
You're not going to apply?
I'm, oh, definitely not. No, I, yeah, well, I won't go there.
Anything else, John?
No, I haven't.
Okay, our next meeting is Wednesday, July 15th in Lakeport and meeting is adjourned.